City Council meeting online at 6:41 PM. Call a meeting to order. Kim, let's do a roll call. I can tell you right now the city council is all here with exception of Dave Harms who will be joining us shortly. Okay. We're going to forego the pledge. It's kind of hard to do without a flag. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda by anybody? There are none. Move forward. We have four items on the consent agenda, all of which are pretty straightforward. If you've gone through them, you'll note that. The typical council meeting minutes from July 14th, we have the payment of bills, which we received in advance. We have the extension of worker comp coverage for volunteers, which is a clarification or an update to to cover current needs, pretty straightforward. And we have an update to the citizen commissions committees, member staff manager was covers a request that we had last meeting. So if you're okay with all four of those, I would entertain a an emotion to approve the consent agenda. If you're not okay with them, go ahead and bring up your concerns now.
I make a motion, we move to accept the consent agenda.
No second.
Thank you, Scott. I had a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion at all? There are none. Please vote with the yes or no vote on the lower right.
Oh. I vote yes, but I'm not getting that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a the four attempts I voted yes. All right, moving forward to guest presentations. Brendan, I see you're on there.
Pardon me, Mayor. I didn't see Scott. Did Scott vote? Scott Cowan?
Yeah.
I thought he did.
Yeah, I did. I just took it off.
Okay, all right. I got you. Thank you.
There we go.
All right. Thank you. Scott, you're going to move yours now as well. All right, okay. We've got a fountain. I see you're on. You want to give us a share ourselves a report, please?
Yeah. So for the month of July, traffic citations were three, traffic warnings nine, two traffic crashes, five arrests, and then an overall of 147 complaints investigations for a total of 161 hours. There was obviously the normal significant fireworks complaint at the beginning of the month. And then we also had a another drug incident through the month that was from another county and being at Love's Truck Stop, where they asked our detectives and patrol to go out there and help with the search. U-Haul search of some drugs that were out there. And the normal across the whole county, you're just getting a lot more person-on-person stuff. So assault, domestic, those types of crimes.
Any concerns around what I think is an increase of calls to Love's? Do you notice a trend there at all, or it's just?
It draws a lot of vehicles, obviously. We've had a couple incidents where people will go in and steal some little store stuff and then try to get away. And there's been a couple other complaints with vehicles going in and out there. But there has been an increase in calls for that area.
Anything else, Brendan?
Nope.
Questions from council for Brendan? You're getting off easy, buddy.
I guess so.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Has Dave joined us yet? Apparently not.
There he is. No, he's there. I just saw him briefly. I just saw him. There he is.
He just popped in.
There he is. Can you hear me, Dave?
I can hear you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We started with that. We have gone through the consent agenda and the Lynn County Sheriff's report as well. So.
That was quick.
Mayor, yes, you'll see, public hearing is up next, but we need to postpone that until 7:00 PM, please.
I was getting ready to do that.
Yeah.
Trust me. Okay, thanks, force. All right, so I'm gonna help me come back right after 7 o'clock. We'll do that then. So in the meantime, we have council and staff comments. Comments from anybody?
Yeah.
Did you mean to pass a public comment?
That's right. Public comment was before public hearing.
I did not mean to do that. No, thank you for correcting me. Because right after guest presentation is that. So we do have a section for public comments, like Kevin. And in order, and we encourage public comment, given this mode of meeting, it's difficult and it's, I think, I believe it catches people away. So we really encourage your comments and your questions and will ask that you click on the right raise your hand thing down there, or if you're on phone. Go ahead. Janelle, you're gonna unmute everybody, right?
I am doing it right now. Actually, two that I not past counselors or part of the architects will be later. So if I unmute them, give them the ability to start their video if they would like.
All right, thank you. So I don't believe we have anybody on phone that's not on on the computer. But if there are, you're welcome to speak up now and Kevin and Lori, you're probably the only ones out there aware of, so.
Well.
All I'll say is I know we missed last month's meeting and I just wanted to thank the city for their help with the issue we had behind our house. Did that resolve finally?
I'm not sure which one that is, so.
You said drug. First, we'll know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Drug offense.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, all right. Good. Any other public input? Thank you. If not, then we will close the public input. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to staff comments or council comments, if there are any.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one. Brought this up a couple times. I'm not sure where we're at on it, or if the many progress or if we're doing anything on it. But vision, vision triangles, especially coming on to Salem, Salem Road there. And what I'm talking about is, you know, 54th Clearwater. You know, there's some fences there, but there's also a lot of vegetation. Makes it very, very not very safe to pull out there. You pull out, you can't see past that. You have to really come out into Salem, Salem Road there. Also, so there's 54th Clearwater. I've noticed it. Steelhead Road coming out. I've noticed that if trucks come out there, they have to really nose out, especially with that the the building there, the business, they like to park stuff there so people can't see past it and their and their fence. And then another one got brought up to me for another vision, so I'll just keep going. So somebody, nobody's stopping me. Is the trees at City Hall. When you come down Concert, come onto Salem Avenue, if you look left, depending on the size of your vehicle, some of those trees block your view of Salem Avenue from people heading south on Salem Avenue. So I was kind of curious if we've looked into that at all, or.
So I'll address City Hall first because that's an easy one. That was brought to our attention just recently. We had the tree that was causing the issue, or at least that the person had brought up trimmed, that has been done now. I would say at that entrance in particular, the there was not vegetation technically blocking the clear vision area. However, it's our tree. It's easy to prune. Let's just make it as good as we can. And if we need to do some additional pruning, we can certainly do that. Some of those other intersections, I think this came up pretty recently, maybe it was the last month's meeting. But you want us to look into that a little further and we can certainly do that. I was planning to do that, but I don't have any more for you at this point. There are some, as you mentioned, there, there's some vegetation, which is a little easier to address than there are fences. And this has been a long-term condition, so we can certainly look at how to make it better and also this is a related but separate item. The speed limit on Old Salem Road has been talked about often on for a long time. We are now at the point where we can submit another request for a speed zone study to the state, so we're going to do that, which may help a bit as well.
Yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be great. Is there any, any way to look at maybe down by Love's separately from the, from the rest, or is it all just kind of, they look at it at the speed throughout? I mean.
The whole.
It's, it's the whole 50 mile an hour section. But there it is. Yeah, that's how it is right now. I don't know if there is the ability for them to, I think there is, to designate a section differently than than the rest, but we will be requesting that whole 50 mile an hour section to be reduced.
Yeah, I think if there was a way to especially study down there separately, but almost, I mean, obviously, if they do it all, then great, if we lower the speed limit, but definitely down there. I know there's a lot of people pulling in and out of there, especially trucks. You know, it gets a little, people slam on the brakes to make it right in there when it's 50 miles an hour. It becomes a little a little hairy there at times, especially if you're pulling a trailer or something. So.
Yeah.
We've, we've also had discussions with Lynn County and discussed requiring Loves to install stop signs potentially at their driveways. That did not get done at the time the project was done.
It shouldn't. It's a private driveway, not a road, so stopping should be known as that's required anyway, but we could ask, obviously, the trucks are not doing it in certain situations. Many people have witnessed it. I've witnessed it. So we do want to ask them to put in some stop signs. We haven't approached Love with that yet. We just had the conversation with the county because it is their road, but of course, they were in favor as well.
Perfect. Great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
I was just gonna say, I do see that daily, obviously. For me, but mostly because I'm here every single day. Every single, almost every single one of those trucks getting out of the gas line does a rolling, you know, rolling right through there.
I've had them pull out right in front of me.
Yeah.
Like I'm coming down the road, they're just slap, slap right in front of me, not even slowing down.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, council? Anything from staff? If not, we still have 15 minutes to go, so let's roll into the.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Quick comment regarding that, rolling through that area. Perhaps we notify Lynn County Sheriff and see if they can go down there and slap some tickets on some people doing that. You know, just an idea, because, you know, I know it's a $265 fine. It's a Class B violation, and so maybe if they watch that a couple of times, that might help to someone's just if I.
Good point. Can staff handle that? With them, please?
Yes, we will handle it.
Thank you. Good idea. Like they said, you see it all the time. You're really going through there, but somebody's not rolling out in front of you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to city manager report.
All right, a couple of things. First off, wanted to just bring you up to speed on a couple of projects that have come across. First one is called Project MM. Company that was evidently looking in this area about three or four years ago came back. We state brought up, they're looking for 15 to 20 acres for warehousing and distribution. I think they're looking at 300 to 400,000 square feet roughly with rail access. We provided information back to them. It sounds like we are one of two sites that are considering looking at for this project. Another project just came out this week on Monday morning, Sunday night, Monday morning for a food processing facility. The total production from line from ingredients to the final product. We have the total of three factories, about a million square feet in total with all three phases. They're looking for 100 and 150 acres. So we're taking a look right now what their water and sewer requirements are, and if that meets, we'll probably direct have Phil go ahead and and put in for that as well. But we are seeing activities still and companies looking in the area.
Did this project come to you from Phil or John?
This, this came directly to us from the state.
Okay, great.
Both of them did.
Okay.
So we're, we're on the state's list now, so they're coming, coming to us on there. The other thing before we get to our project list, I think what I'd like to do, you see here, we've had a request for a farmer's market and like to discuss it, but since we have the architects on now, if you don't mind, like to maybe move to that. So we can share with you where we are at with the fire station design, and we have a couple of preliminary renderings. We'd like to share kind of your thoughts on so that they can hopefully will that down to a couple of choices where we could then get stuff out for public feedback and comment as well. So if you're comfortable with that, I'd like to move to that right now, and then we can let them go so they don't have to stand for the rest of our report here.
Okay.
I'm gonna let Janelle go ahead and share with you what we've got up here on the screen.
I'm just gonna give a quick overview of what we're gonna touch on, and then we have Dan and Kelkar, who's our well, Eric is our project manager, but she's not able to be on tonight. And then Eric Talbot, who has been working on these exterior renderings and that design. Dan and Eric, I tried to unmute you both. Hopefully you've got the ability to speak now when you, when you're ready. But we'll talk about, we'll show you the floor plan that we've, that's been selected, some minor tweaks still going on to it, but it's very close. It's very similar to the one we showed you last, last month. And we have some exterior renderings showing the appearance and want to get your feedback and let Eric talk through that and Dan if he wants. We do have a geotechnical report now that draft that has been provided. It does indicate the potential for some seismic settlement. So just wanted to give you a heads up that the foundation design may need to accommodate some settlement. We're gonna look at that a little harder before we go too far down any the design pathway, but just be prepared for that. And then we'll also look at the location on the site. So Dan and Eric, if you wanna, I don't know if you want to say anything about the floor plan, but if I can just advance through the slides as you're ready, if you want to talk about this a little bit.
Let's help Dan introduce himself and take us through the introduction of the project, perhaps. This is Eric.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I apologize if you don't have my video. I've been messing with this since the start of the meeting and it's still not there. So this is the floor plan that we landed on. It's approximately 9800 square feet. It has a public and meeting room, which utilized for the fire department as well. The living quarters for six full-time crews, so there's six dormitories, kitchen, living space and dining room and a two and a half bay apparatus bay garage, which can in the future be easily expanded to be three full bays. So it gives enough space for the ladder truck, two additional engines and a smaller vehicle and potentially a trailer for equipment or boat. And then when what you see in that upper right-hand corner, there's a breakdown of small rooms that can be moved to the outside, so on the same side of the exercise room and make for three full 77-foot-deep drive-through bays. You want to go to the site real quick, Janelle? Okay, well, you can actually jump into this. Oh, okay. This is current site plan. There's still some variations out there, so it has not been finalized. But essentially showing a new road off of Old Salem Road going to the west, and then part of the project will turn that 90 degrees to the north and go up to Concert Road. So the road goes in front of the City Hall. The fire station in all the current iterations is cited such that the engines will enter on to the east-west leg that has direct access to Old Salem Road. And has parking in the back and a small amount of public parking in the front to facilitate the main station entrance. So I'll turn this over to Eric so he can walk through the two design iterations that we're working on.
Real quick, before Eric jumps in, just want to point out for people what we showed you on the floor plan and what you're seeing in the site plan are mirror images of each other. So we're still working out exactly how it sits on the site with the road and the slopes required. But this, this is just a mirror image of what you saw up here. Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Hey, thanks. Yes. These renderings show the apparatus bays towards the highway. In the site plan that we just looked at, it would be the apparatus base to the left and the entrance slightly to the right. I don't know if you can mirror that in your mind, but for now, this is, this has the entrance to the downhill side of the, of the site, to the, to the riverside, the west of the apparatus bay. These two options are identical in floor plan. They're, they're two different flavors of, let's say, I'm trying to hearken a little bit to Station 11. This, this brick materiality, this traditional material and permanence, quality and but to, I mean, and for budget reasons, to place that brick judiciously onto masses around the building so that it looks somewhat like a brick building, but yet there are other areas that are penalized for some cost benefits. The image on the left, it's the building's broken up into three main masses. There's the apparatus bay. There's the main station area that includes the entry, the day room, dormitories and back. And then to the left is the community or meeting room. Let's see, so we've got parking in front. We've got the apparatus driveway, drive in the, on the right. And there at the left corner, there's an area that's screened in by planting, which is the day room, outdoor area, patio, plaza. There's a good portion that's overcovered by the area. There's by the roof. There's, there's a recess, a little nook between the meeting room and the day room to, so that there's covered area outside adjacent to the outdoor area. The image on the left, these are very slightly sloped roofs, one and 12 pitch. They're standing seam metal roofs for great drainage. And the roofs are extended over the entry to provide a little protection. I think, I guess if I was to use one word on this, this design, it's a little more contemporary take on on architecture as opposed to a more traditional look. There's been some, you guys had mentioned that that might be an attractive look for you. Both of these are, I think, there's, there's a both good options, and we're looking just to present these as two different flavors to maybe generate discussion between yourselves. The image on the right, can we, can you make that primary? Yeah, there. This has a, is a fully covered under, under a single roof. It's a very long, low gable. The idea being to hearken a bit to agricultural farms, this being a somewhat rural area. The, it has the same brick base, the wrapping of some of the shapes with brick, and it has the same outdoor area next to the day room and the meeting room. This has the, the main roof, the apparatus bay roof extends to the left and covers over the main entrance to the, to the station. And we've got some openings on the upper parts of the gables. These are to let light in, but they're also hallmarks of some of the agrarian agricultural architecture in the area. Depending on your, on your aesthetic, those may look interesting or correct, or they may be surprising and maybe odd. But so those, those windows, I think those are, those are open for discussion. But they, they are part of the ideas to perhaps have this long gable, have some have those windows break up those, those gables and to give it a little bit of a slightly contemporary feel. And we've got full windows on the south. The apparatus bay doors are, are all glass. We can see the apparatus inside. But then around, as we move around the building, the window openings on this public side are, are smaller. There, there's where we're privacy is the interest and with the windows around the, and towards the side are, was a lot of windows for the day room and the connection over to the meeting room. But that's all somewhat protected by foliage or landscaping. And I think that's, that, that's a basic description of these two simple designs. Thank you very much.
And Eric, just so you're aware, we may have to take a quick break for a public hearing, but I doubt that there will be any testimony. Very little, if any, so it should be just a quick break. We'll have to break at 7:00. And then we can come right back to this.
We got three minutes, right?
I've got all the time you need.
Okay, do you want to take questions? Now you want to just break? Now come back. Well, we have two minutes. Let's go ahead and make the break. Get ready for public hearing at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
So bear with us for a moment here.
That's great.
Thank you. I'm going by the clock on my computer, so it should be accurate.
So while we're waiting, I'm sorry, I'm resetting the share because it wasn't showing part of my screen I thought I was sharing. That looks better. Okay. I can just speak briefly about the location on site and, you know, one concern, one reason for flipping the station this way is to push the driveway, the main way, away from this road so we can get the slope we need. Because there's a pretty big, sorry, I should kind of screen, grade difference from the road up here to where the station will be. But in doing so, puts the dorm rooms closer to Old Salem Road, which was a concern for noise potentially. So we did some measuring and the nearest dorm room here to Old Salem Road is about 160 feet to the edge of the road. For a reference point, in the council chambers here at City Hall, when you're sitting there at the dais, you're about 130 feet away from Old Salem Road. And you're on about the same level with it as far as elevation goes, and you have glass between you and the road. So just to think about the sound, if, when you look at the whole site, it feels like it's close to Old Salem, but if you think about it that way, sound may not be as much of an issue as was maybe a previous concern. So we wanted to bring that up as well.
So this is, this discussion today is specifically and only about the architectural design of the building or their related questions that can be asked as well?
Was primarily for that, but if there's other questions, feel free to ask those as well.
Okay, so thank you. 7:00 o'clock, we'll move into the public hearing regarding the property we're proposing to sell, which is adjacent to the business on Concert Road, which is just to the west of the property we have sold to Pacific Power for a new substation. So to testify virtually during public hearing via computer, signal the intent to speak and like to speak after comments, those who have joined us, their computer will be unmuted and so forth. So you can raise your hand and speak. If you're off the computer, we'll unmute anybody who I don't believe is here right now to speak otherwise. I want to cover the purpose of this. I'm trying to find it. It's in this comment I have in front of me. I'm getting new glasses, so it'll help in the future. The purpose really is to gain public input on the city's desire to sell property, a small piece of property between the scrapyard and Pacific Power's new location on Concert Road. This is not a time to discuss the specifics of that, which is actually under nude business. So again, I'm going to open for public caring on the city's proposal to sell a small piece of property on Concert Road between what was sold to Pacific Power, which is just adjacent to Woods Road and going down to the west to the scrapyard. So if anybody has public comments related to that, please indicate your desire to do so now. And Lori, it's okay to raise your hand again. I don't know that we have anybody. I don't know that we have anybody on phone other than our guests. Therefore, I'll wait another few seconds.
No. Mayor, I would just ask that we might just confirm with him that we did not receive any email comments either or written comments?
We did not.
Okay. All right, pretty basic process here, Eric.
Mayor, I, I do need to raise a few, I need to bring in some evidence though, before you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so one of the intention, or one of the requirements by the ORS is that I provide evidence and market value of the property and needs to be fully disclosed at the public hearing. So just to substantiate that, this is a new tax lot that has been developed and it was tax lot, it's now tax lot 200. And it was really resulting from the sale of 4.5 acres to Pacific Core recently. Pacific Core property sold at $130,680 per acre. This tax lot 200 is .15 acres. So I divided it 130, 680, which was the sale of Pacific Core, by the .15 acres. And that's how I came up with a sales price of $19,602. And so eventually you folks will have in front of you a resolution. And this resolution will be authorizing me and Kevin to proceed with the sale of, or closing of this property. There are some documents that are also provided. There is an agreement to release indemnify and defend. Basically, it's saying that the Moores, when they purchase this property, will do everything in their power to protect the city of Millersburg going forward if the city of Millersburg is ever sued for any reason as a result of ending on that .15 acres. And then I prepared a legal description and a statutory warranty deed. The Moores have also agreed, in addition to the $19,602, they are also paying all the closing costs, which will be happening. So if you folks eventually set or agree to this resolution, the next step will be that I'll be contacting Susan Creel from American Title, setting this up for closing. I did speak with Gordon Moore just last week and he's got the money burning a hole in his pocket. He wants to get this closed as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything, any comment from public? Hearing that, I'm going to close the hearing. And we'll move on our agenda and we'll get into the resolution that forces spoke to, under new business. Okay, let's go back to the presentation on the fire station. And with questions, I believe you folks are ready for questions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from council? I have one then.
Mayor, one of the things I would, I would just add that one of the things that we asked them to, to try to take into consideration also is what, and something I think would be good for council to provide input on, is we look at commercial occupancies and, and others. What type of look do you want to see that we could, you know, does this kind of reflect what you would like to see maybe in, you know, as, as a standard for some of, of those items? And you'll also notice on the first slide, the, we're getting some feedback here, I'm not sure why. The, the first slide, one of the things that you'll notice is the roof line is similar to what we have at City Hall, but it's in the opposite direction. So a very similar design to what's currently at City Hall with the first rendering with the, what the architects refer to as the shed style roof.
I'm ready. Council?
Yeah, so I have a, I have a question on the brick. So is, is, is brick a cheaper way to build? You kind of, you kind of mentioned that. Is that one of the more cheaper materials that we can use for building a fire, fire station?
No, it is actually the opposite. It's, it's expensive and so we've, we've limited its, the amount we're using on the building. So that using, it's a quality material that has great durability, especially down low. And it's, so it's, it's, I think, I think that's, it's judicious, it's judiciously used to keep it, keep the cost lower.
So, so is it, I guess one of my, one of my things, so first of all, I liked the first design with the shed roof, probably the best. And then when you started explaining the next one with the agricultural look and it kind of, you know, I'd be a little more towards this other, other one, but I still think I like the shed one better. But that being said is, is I know that, I, I guess I just look at like our City, City Hall. You know, and obviously it is a little older, but, but it's definitely, it's definitely more modern type look. I mean, I, I think it fits in more with our agriculture and industrial. It's just, it's a really, it's a really neat building that we, that we built there. And I know that this kind of matches a lot of what Albany has. But if I look outside of, you know, as far as their fires, fire stations. If I look outside of that though, when I look at Millersburg, I don't see where this matches anything that we, that we have there. So I mean, we have the agriculture and agricultural buildings from that, although we're kind of starting to, especially within the city, move away from that. We're more warehouse, industrial look. And I think that's a lot of what we're going to see going in, especially with the, with the reload center. You know, it's not going to be probably, you know, red buildings, so, or brick buildings. So I guess I, yeah, maybe would have liked to see something a little more modern or a little more in industrial feel. I guess what, what's just my first thoughts?
Which one are you proposing Scott?
Well, I like, out of those two, I like the one with the shed roof. So the option A, the best probably.
Okay.
But out of those two, but I would just go more to the material side, especially bricks not cheap anyways. You know, there, there might be some, something we could do that would more fit in with especially what's going to, what's going to go in that area. So.
But what are the things just to, to keep in mind, everything to the north and then directly to the east of us. Remember that's all zoned now will be zoned commercial. So we're going to be kind of that, that split between the commercial and the industrial. And one of the things that we had shared, and if council would like to do otherwise, that's fine. We started with them was kind of set the tone for something that would fit in with that industrial, commercial mix. And also kind of set the tone for what do you want to see in your commercial buildings here? Do we want our commercial buildings to look like an industrial? Or do we want it to look more of a, of an upscale, commercial area? So that's kind of one of the things that we were trying to shoot for a little bit here. And if that's not direct, where you, you'd like to see something different, we can go that direction too.
No, I actually, I actually like that Kevin. I mean, that fits in. I don't see how, I guess I'm just first looking at it and I'm thinking a fire, a fire station, especially with the, with the brick, I'm thinking a fire station's been around since the nineties. You know, so I mean, it's kind of that same look that's, that's been around forever. It's not really, I, I, I don't see too many new commercial buildings that are probably going to be built with red brick. I just, you don't see that very often, not, not anymore. So, so I'm with you. I think we, I think there's, I think we should do that. And I'm, you know, and, and I do agree that it should be, you know, kind of set the tone, especially since you're going to see it from Old Salem Avenue. But, you know, is there another material or is there another, another, another look that we can go? And again, I bring that back to our, to our City Hall. It still looks like a modern building even today, even though it was built a while ago. You know, so it definitely doesn't look like a typical city, city hall. So.
So what are you thinking Scott? Like a split face block or something or?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I was just on here Googling a bunch of different fire stations, like architectural designs, you know, and there's just, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty open. I mean, an industrial look, yeah, maybe a split block look. Maybe some with more windows or, or rounded, so it's more open. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to go. Maybe some more metal on the front. Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot of different stuff. So.
So this, this is Dan with SodaStream. I think, I think the application of the metal definitely has the ability to lend toward more of the industrial look that you have on some of the buildings, especially on the other side of the road. The brick itself could be, that materiality could be played with. I heard the word split faced or ground face block. That can actually be applied in a veneer application like a brick, which is less expensive and easier.
I would rather do that. This is probably.
And then as far as the opacity and the, the opaque areas, that could definitely be adjusted to create whatever type of openness or transparency you feel it needs from the street side. Part of the opaque nature, especially if you take a look at the, the living quarters, really has to do with providing sound barriers with the street and privacy to the dining, living area for the, the crew.
And this is Eric. Scott, those are really great comments. You know, I do think that the Miller, Millersburg identity and the, especially the City Hall, I mean, it's a beautiful building. I think, you know, it's, it's the tops, design wise, it's really remarkable character. And I, I'm really interested in this idea of somehow maybe leaning more toward that established vocabulary. And maybe then setting a precedent, setting the tone for this district with some of that in mind too.
Makes sense. All right, Andy, Scott County, you've been involved this. Where's your head on this?
Yeah, so I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I was sort of torn in between the two, you know, I was really focused more on the roof line. So it would be nice tonight to be able to identify the option A or option B is preferred. And definitely listening to the comments. The, the, in our past conversations, we talked about like this photo here in option A. That it's, the, the area that's not brick, that's more that lighter color definitely was talked about that that could be a, a metal type look that it would, could, could potentially match like what City Hall has there. And any, we could add even more. I, I do, you know, I'm definitely, I, I do agree that we need to set the tone of what we want to move forward with, with future commercial and industrials type buildings. And so this is sort of, you know, this is exciting times and a big decision, you know, to, to set that tone. And I, I agree so much with the, the City Hall. It is a unique building and, you know, being built, you know, many years ago, it still stands out. So I would be in favor of maybe trying to see a rendering of, of some, some type of blend similar to that style and see what that sort of looks like.
Agreed.
One of the things I would just point out that the cladding that's on City Hall now is not what the original was. So that, that was done. And one thing I think is important is we look at these at the fire station is, whatever siding we look at going to, we have something that's low maintenance on it. So, you know, it's something that we're not having to paint and things. And I like Dan's comment, if we do go to a split block, we go to more of a veneer style. We, Albany Stations 13 and 14 were a split block and we had some issues with, with water through them for, that we dealt with for the first three years. We ended up having to paint, paint them. We couldn't get around it. So now that's an ongoing thing that they have to be painted to, to seal it. So I think we want to make sure that we have something that we don't run into those type of, of issues with, if possible.
So this is Dan again. I was just looking at a picture of the City Hall. And I think there are some strong architectural characters there that could be brought into this. I have to defer to Eric on that one, but it, it seems like there, there's some potential without recreating the wheel.
Yeah, I think we're, we're on our way in terms of representing the different pieces of the building. I think that the, the materiality though, to pick up on some of the City Hall, and again, to try and set the tone for this, this district. I think we really, we have an opportunity here. Those are really good comments.
Charlie, Dave? Anything?
Yeah, I mean, I like option A as far as the roof goes, the roof line goes. Agree with, agree with Kevin completely that, you know, you want to kind of set the tone if we're going to start developing, you know, a commercial area or what we, what we intend for the buildings to look like in the future, as far as a build standard. You know, I, the brick, I get the nostalgia of the brick with the firehouse, I guess. I don't, you know, I kind of, I'm with Scott as well as far as, you know, I don't know if I, if it would be my first choice. I mean, I think there's all kinds of different materials that would give you maybe even more efficiency and less money. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't build fire stations every day, so I don't know that. But, you know, you're even a, I think there's a buddy of mine built a, a, a really nice place. It's probably the most efficient house I've ever seen. It's a humongous house, but it's like, he used these ICF logic blocks. They're amazing. I don't think, you know, so I, I just want to make sure we think out of the box on that. And then it's, it's, you know, efficient as well as appears how we would like it to appear. But yeah, I, all good comments. I think that, again, my, my preference as far as roof line goes, option A.
I'm good with option A. I'm still kind of like Dave and Scott on the brick. I'm one that likes to think outside the box and see what it would look like with some other type of surface, a split face block or such. The, the red brick is just kind of archaic looking to me.
I basically agree with everybody. I go with A as well. I'm not excited about brick. I do like the concept of tying it back to City Hall as much as best, best we can. A kind of related question, maybe I'm too late, but hey, what's the downside of putting those three rooms up in the northeast corner, put them outside now and create the additional space inside now as opposed to going back and putting money into it later?
Primary is cost. So you're adding that additional square footage onto your footprint. Probably won't need that additional space for maybe 20 years, potentially.
Okay. If that's the case, no problem. But the reason I, what got my attention, you mentioned earlier, he's mentioned the apparatus that would go in there. You mentioned the trailer and you mentioned, you know, I have a brush rig and then you all, by the way, we're going to put an ambulance in there. You got the space, and therefore you're going to fill it up.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead Janelle.
It's probably what you were going to say Scott. I was going to say we've, we've lengthened the bays a little bit to make them flexible, to be able to allow some different pieces of equipment. And I think Scott jumped in here if I say it's wrong, but I think the, the first out engine would be, you know, in one bay. And then another long bay could house the those and trailer and medic unit. And then a reserve engine over here. But depending on what equipment they want to put out there, they may put a medic unit over here. Just it gives them flexibility, but that additional base space isn't needed at the staffing levels that we're, we have at the moment.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just to tag on that a little bit, the, the, a lot of conversation mayor about like, like what you were just suggesting. And, and, you know, we've been doing a lot of measuring of our apparatus of what, what, you know, our current fleet is measuring at, as well as what potential future apparatus would, would look like. And we did, you know, initially that, that third half bay was quite, quite a bit shorter. We've really done some adjusting to, and, and just really some of the architects have done some really good work just trying to get every, you know, square foot that we can to accommodate. And I see it now at 40, you know, 40 feet, seven inches, which is really going to keep that third bay as really a, a diverse usable space for many options from a reserve engine to, to a medic unit, to a, a small boat with a tow vehicle. Which are, those are all, those are vehicles that we're considering placing out there at the time, once it opens. But yeah, a lot of diversity there. I'm not sure if, it, it, just to clear you, you'll see also that area is a mezzanine for additional storage would be above that half bay moving back, yeah, where it's been, as you're highlighting. So I know we probably talked about that in the last meeting, but just to remind that, that, that would be as well in there, which gives us additional storage.
Thank you. Good enough. Okay.
And I, also just for council, I've been really, I, I don't know. I didn't, I just sort of, when getting into this, looking at square footage, I really, I sort of told dark techs that trying to hold it to 10,000 or less, I mean, that's just my number. You know, it's, it, it, every square foot is, is money. But I think, I think what we're looking But I think I think what we're looking at there is a really a really good usable station for a really a a long-term hall with with serving the community without really a lot of adjustments, you know, the the extra rooms, the distant, the the extra distance in that third bay, just giving a lot of of options for future growth. I really think this is gonna be a a good, a good station for the long, long-term use of the of the of the city.
And and Scott, one of the things we might want to remind him of, I'm not sure we discussed it at the last one, but you see the area where the covered patio is. Since that area could be expanded all the way to the edge of the is designed to be expanded there, we could take the and put additional dorms in if we were to go to a larger crew out there that mirrors that would then open right into that same area. So you'd have a hallway. So if you can take pretty much those dorms and we could put, I think, four or five more dorms right there and be within the footprint.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments for guests or questions?
I had one more thing that on the the structure here, the roof structure especially. I think someone mentioned energy efficiency earlier. We do have a meeting on Friday with Oregon Energy Trust to talk through the project with them. This is the point where we would engage them. And if solar is well, we may be required to do some portion of solar, but if we if that is something that we want to go, this this roof is oriented to take advantage of that. House from certain angles, you would see some of that on the roof, although it's it's pretty low profile now, I believe. But that's that's another actor in the roof design is if solar is going to be incorporated.
Thank you.
I, yeah, I think that's a good point for counsel to consider is that. And I think the architects, we talked about that before, the architects, we can get a
Be integrated in the roof.
Yeah, rendering of the roof. And and actually, is it possible potentially to get that 3D look as well? Like we've seen the the some of some of the other layouts done. It might be helpful for counsel, just a thought. Oh, and I couldn't stress enough that we we definitely do need to the the more of the maintenance free or at least reduction in maintenance is is definitely going to be a a win for us. It's definitely with the limited staffing that we have and and in the city. So that's something definitely take take consideration of.
Other comments?
Uh, I have one and I I know functionally why it might be, but to me it's I don't know if it's the reason why I would go for it. But is it gonna be called Station fifteen? Are we gonna call it Station One Millersburg?
It will likely be Millersburg Station fifteen.
Okay. All right.
How do you feel about that, Dave? I mean, is you?
I mean, me personally, I I I would like to see one. I know I know what the I'm gonna guess what the reason why is. So there's there's no confusion. But thinking forward, I mean, you know, Millersburg Station One is that versus Station fifteen doesn't seem too hard for people to communicate. And then, you know, I I'm not saying that it would it's gonna happen anytime soon, but down the road, many years from now, you know, does does Millersburg have its own? You know, crew in in its own fire station. So I don't, I I mean, at that point, maybe just signage and stuff like that. But I just, I don't. To me, it's not, again, maybe I'm wrong, maybe that's not why, but I'm assuming that's why, just from a communicative standpoint. But to me, Millersburg Station One is fifteen.
It is, and that's I just was, yeah, I one, it's it's tied into dispatch and resource allocation. And it's a lot cleaner if we go with what we've been, you know, calling our temporary, you know, Station fifteen with the Lynn County Dispatch and and how that works as well as carrying that over to to neighboring departments. So I think, I mean, unless there was a, you know, really a big disagreement on that, I I I would really recommend we keep it. I I totally want Millersburg out on the front of the building. And, you know, and and make sure it's it's clear there just for our community. But if we can keep that Station fifteen, I think really that's gonna be important to try to stay with. I do know that if if in the future, like you were saying, councilors, that if we made a move and a decision to basically become our own, then then at that point, that definitely can change and you change the dispatch carts and and all of the of the changes there. And so it would be a signage and then a change down a dispatch. So just for a little bit more clarification and I don't know, Kevin, if you had any additional points?
Yeah, I I I would agree. Trying to to do that would be very difficult. One, because we, even if we were to go to our own numbering system, it would still be a two-digit number. It wouldn't be just the one. It would need to be, if you wanted to reflect the equipment that's running out of there. So if you have people listening to scanners or anything wanting to know what their engine's doing, you wouldn't be hearing Millersburg Engine One. It would be Millersburg and then have to look at whatever's open in the county. And I'm not sure what number that would be. I'm not, I think that count all the single digits are out.
Yeah. It's actually an interesting story offline. I'll tell you about it, Dave. But yeah, I don't I don't think there's actually really a lot of options right now to do that. Would that be an interesting situation to be in? But it is a county county-wide numbering system, so we would be going against the county system.
Well, the reply would be you learn something every day. So thanks for informing me.
And I would, you know, just looking at what it would take to be able to to handle everything. You know, you're probably a minimum thirty, forty years before you'd even have the capacity to consider that. Because it's not just your fire response. If you do that, then you're gonna have to pick up all the other administrative costs and things. I I don't foresee that happening anytime time soon where it would be a standalone facility operated by the city.
Okay, so I have a related question, not at all related to the architectural design. But and I'm sure Kevin, we've covered this, but I don't recall a response. And that is we have an engine going out and going on to Salem Road from either location, either be Conser or off this new driveway. How do we control traffic other than a red light on an engine?
So if if those of you that have been in Albany and have been by Station Twelve, which is on Thirty Fourth Avenue, there's a there are signs up that say emergency apparatus and their opticon trips that and they start flashing. It's kind of like our crosswalk. So there'll be there'll be stuff, but there's also looking at there will be pretty good, there's real good vision. This is probably gives you a better vision clearance coming out here than what we have currently on Conser.
Right, I agree. So there'll be flashing lights at the intersection or before the intersection?
It would be before the intersection. So there'll be a sign very similar to what you see with the crosswalk signs that we have. So there there are yellow diamond sign that'll be on each side of the road to a distance, you know, north and south. And when they light, there's the perimeter and interior, you know, lights that come on above and above and outlines it says emergency vehicles entering roadway or something like that.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I asked.
Mayor, this is Count again. If 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 you or the council wants to if 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 this is a a concern or more of a a topic that needs to be looked at, I I can definitely get you like a video of of that station and the lighting down on Station Twelve, just to sort of show you what what that looks like in the distancing when a emergency vehicle pulls out on the highway or on the Thirty Fourth. If you like, I could work.
Thank you. It looks like you got a car with that. I was concerned without a traffic light. That's a great option. Thank you.
Definitely on our radar for sure.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding architectural drawings? Thank you, architects, for the work you've done. I think you got some feedback from us.
Yeah, I wanted to say thanks to all because it's it's been fabulous feedback. So we really appreciate it.
Good deal. Well, thanks for all your help.
Good night.
All right, well, thank you. We'll move forward then continuing down the manager's report, project updates.
Yeah, so I actually if we go back, when I wanted to go back and talk about requests for farmer's market that we've received. We received a request from an individual that has been involved with farmer's markets and a group that is interested in judging from counsel, if you'd be interested in seeing a farmer's market here next year. What they're looking at is the they'd like to look at doing a farmer's market June, July, and August to start out. They were shooting for maybe Wednesday nights from four to seven. Janelle, I talked with the young lady who is sponsoring it. They have a honey farm just east of us here. They have already talked with vendors. It sounds like they've been very involved with with these and other communities, both in Flemish, London, and she's familiar with Albany, but a number of communities where they have done them. They would be looking at nine to twelve vendors. Everything from you what you would normally see at a farmer's market, including some vendors that would be doing salads and breads and canned foods that are from their farms. Green Bridge Farms, which is just north of town here, I guess, with blueberries. They have someone that has a tractor that comes in and does homemade ice cream. They have their honey. Number of companies that would, number of farmers that would be bringing in farm-fresh produce. A little German bakery and some ground coffee is some of the things that they're looking at. They have asked about potentially doing it at the park and Janelle and I have had some some thoughts on that. We think that a good area that may be able to accommodate, and we talked with them a little bit about it, would be south of the parking lot there in the area where we have the they could set up so they could be along. They would get up against the walking path on both sides there where they could do. They talked about maybe even on some nights bringing in some some music that would be, you know, low, low-key music and some other things that would be playing on it. And if there is interest, they would be interested in having the council, they'd like to have about six to twelve people on a on a board. And they'd be interested in having accounts, someone from the council represented on that if you're interested. And if you'd be willing to to entertain their request for looking at hosting a farmer's market. It sounds like they've got quite a bit of interest from people in the areas and have heard some from some community members as well. And Janelle, feel free to jump in with anything that I missed.
Well, they they have some some creative ideas for the future, too. They did recognize that by next year even, there could still be some COVID requirements and they're prepared to deal with those. But that's part of the reason for getting started in the conversation now, but not looking at doing anything until next spring, summer. But they had some ideas about even local, the residents being able to come and share some of their local produce. Given and drop off and pick up things. So one thing that was encouraging about the conversation is that this isn't someone who just is growing a few things at home and thinks if you go to start up a farmer's market, they have experience with doing this. And so they're not really at this point asking the city to to make this happen for them. They're asking, are we willing to let them do it? And then is council interested and would be willing to participate with the process?
And the vendors that they're looking at are all experienced vendors that are already participating in farmer's markets in the area.
Comments from Castle?
Yeah, this is Count and I I I love it. I think it's a great idea and I we will know if it's, you know, a bust if if it is without trying it. So I say we we try it. There it sounds like they're definitely flexible and they're experienced. It's, yeah, I think it's exciting. I think it's a great growth for our community and and involvement. And lastly, I would nominate the mayor to be the spokesperson at the board that moves forward.
I was gonna nominate you.
I know.
You're the guy with the pigs.
This is this is Counsel Harms. I second that.
Which one? Which one?
What Counsel Cowan suggested.
Oh, yeah, right. You would. Let's go ahead, John. Where's your head?
You know, I think it's a great idea. Like to see some type of like something on paper instead of just verbiage, right? I don't know what everybody else thinks. Kind of see like to see a little bit of an operating plan or something, just a basic. What are they planning on doing? What's the square footage look like? What do the stalls look like? I think it's a great idea, though, for the community.
Yeah, good point.
And and I believe they're willing to provide that. They just wanted to see if there was interest first. If there is, they've said that they would like to get the board together and and start putting the the plans together to to present, so.
I think it's a great idea. Scott, let's see, where's your head?
Yeah, no, I think it's I think it's great. I think we have a lot of obviously farms around there and a lot of, you know, people who are more hobby farmers who who could really like doing something like that. And question though, why why Wednesday night? Is that because there are there are other farmer's markets during the weekend or?
The looking at it for the weekend. And yes, so that's that's part of it. They've done it in some other areas and it's been a really good night, they said, to to do it. So but they'd be looking at it going from four to seven P M. On on Wednesdays. That would probably work out better for us when you look at the type of things, because one of the things is if they wanted to use the park, you know, during the summer, in a normal summer, non-COVID summer, you know, we have our shelters and stuff that are, you know, it's it's a pretty busy facility to try to coordinate everything with a and have a farmer's market there at the park as well. So a Wednesday night would probably accommodate, the park could accommodate better than other locations. And they really, we talked about more, maybe it's where there maybe be some other locations, but their hope is to really encourage people to walk, you know, the neighborhoods to walk over and be kind of a non-going thing where they can come over and get things. And there'll be things where, you know, you can get to go salads and make goods and stuff. So I could see people walking over there and picking up dinner, you know, stuff for their dinner and stuff even that night, so.
Yeah, no, I I think you're right on. So I mean, the only concern I would have about the park on a on a Wednesday night is obviously sports programs out there, you know, so I know they like a lot during those times, we'd have to somehow coordinate with that or or where the location is, obviously. So, but yeah, that that sounds great.
That was the first thing we talked with them about, actually, when we talked about the park and summer coordination with the the sports going on. But we definitely would work, would need to work that out. That's what one of the reasons we thought of the area with the path, so it isn't taking up the parking.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, there's also the area to the west of the second second restroom on the on the south end. There's that, there's that trail through there. That area.
That's the trail we're talking about.
Oh, okay, perfect. Yeah, all right. So that's that's great.
Kevin, we're gonna need to work on some of the legal requirements. So I mean, any waiver liability or it's similar to like we do for the festivals as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Albany and Corales.
Yeah, and we were aware of it. The the first question was, is it something the council even wanted to consider?
So they're looking for somebody to, you're saying they have a board or just a committee?
They would like to, if if Millersburg is willing to to host and consider, they want to put together a a board or committee. And they have asked if there is someone on council would like to be a representative on that as well. They're looking at probably having six to twelve people on there with along with a counselor if they're so interested.
I'd be willing to do it, but you you know, Scott Cowan, you got the farm over there. It better fit for you.
I'll give it a try. I'll step in and and.
Oh, well, yeah, perfect, perfect.
I'll be out there, Mayor.
I'll be your, I'll be your backup. How's that?
Okay.
All right. So that's a record show. Scott Cowan volunteered to be the guy. Okay, anything else, Kevin?
Not on that. So but we we have the rest of the project updates. So I'll let Janelle.
Just on that, did they talk any anything about fees to the city or if we were gonna charge them for space or anything? Was that discussed at all with them?
We 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 didn't. And and I figured that would be a council decision, but, you know, my thought initially was initially to get them going, you know, if it's something the council really wants, you know, maybe, you know, other than making sure they have their insurance requirements and stuff to meet and things like that, so.
No, I I I got, I agree totally. That's why I was mentioning that, yeah, I think to help them get started, at least my perspective, I don't know where the other council members are, but, you know, at least to have them get started. I don't I don't think there should be any any fee there, so.
Agreed, yeah. Okay.
All right. So I'll just go down the rest of the list of projects. The Flurry Seal Project, I won't go into a lot of detail, but we did post a Q and A on the website, which The Slurry Seal project, I won't go into a lot of detail, but we did post a Q and A on the website, which I think was sent to all of you as well, and it's in the packet. Just to try to help answer some questions, things we were seeing and hearing from residents. The, you know, we're ways away from it for next year, but we do have in our maintenance program, plan to continue doing this type of work. So, now that people have had a chance to see it and hopefully, especially after we get the street sweeping later this month, it should maybe help things look a little cleaner. But I, I feel like it's looking more uniform now than initially, but I don't know. Any councillors have any comments or questions or thoughts they want to share on the Slurry Seal now that it's been in place for a little bit?
I appreciate the, the Q and A. I think that's smart and, you know, well done. So, good job.
Hey, Janelle Forrest, just wondering, I haven't spoke with you. We had those issues come up beforehand about towing the vehicles. How did that actually turn out? Any issues?
No, no issues. It was, it worked out fine. We had great support from LTSO. Greg was out here himself driving the streets each morning, making sure everyone was cleared. There's only one vehicle that turned out to be an issue and it, it was dealt with.
Good.
Great. That was, that was actually a good exercise for the project. I mean, the, the coordination that took place there between the contractor, Janelle and Kevin, and law enforcement was pretty awesome to watch. I hadn't, they did our neighborhood first. I got to go out and watch that. It was pretty impressive the way that was organized. So, thank you.
And we had a, we had a really well organized contractor. That was, that was helpful. For our first project like this, you know, they've been through it a lot. And, and of course, LTSO was great to provide support. Okay, so.
Question back, just back on the slurry and just what you mentioned. I'm assuming then future projects will have to bid that out, just like we did with this one?
Yes. Well, our threshold for doing quotes or bids is a dollar amount. It depends on the size of the project. We've been able to do these with quotes, not the full bid process, but it amounts to the same thing. We, we will get quotes. All of you are gonna be big enough that we're gonna need to get quotes.
I guess we get the quotes. Just, I know if, like you just pointed out, this clearly wasn't their first rodeo. It could have been a complete yard sale with maybe a different, you know, on a, you know, a different type of contractor. So, you know, this thing definitely could have gone sideways, I think. And it sounds like, you know, there's obviously some challenges. So it'd be nice to be able to sort of lean on that same contractor potentially if they're, you know, obviously probably gonna bid again. So I just, it'd be nice to be able to use them again. Like them.
Right. And they already asked if we thought we'd do this again next year. So I know they'll be interested. Experience is definitely a part of the, the process and there are controls in the request for quotes that make sure they have experience. I know of a couple others that do this kind of work in the area, but we definitely do have the flexibility to not go with the low bidder if we don't think they're going to perform the way we.
Perfect. So that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thermoplastics project. This one is done now. It took place in a matter of a couple days. So it really was not very disruptive. We didn't get a single call, I don't think, from anyone about it. But I'm gonna just show some pictures real quick if you didn't get a chance to see it. This is a picture of the thermoplastic cycling symbol on Millersburg Drive. I believe it was 12 years old because I don't think they had been redone since the original. So that's the kind of shape it was in. It doesn't fit real well on concrete. This is what the painted symbol on Alexander, possibly nine years old. I don't know if those were ever repainted since the street went in, but very faded. And then here's a new symbol. So I just wanted to show those and you've all probably seen them if you've driven around now. It costs more upfront to do thermoplastic, but it lasts a long time. That Millersburg Drive on, I mean, being there for 12 years. That's longer than the lifespan they'll tell you they have, but we've had good experience with it, so. Are there any questions on, on that project?
I got a question on that one. This is Ron Post. The, on Millersburg Drive, I noticed one of the arrows was pointing the wrong direction on the, for the bicyclist against traffic. Was that intentional?
No, I am not aware of that. I'll take a look. I'll go take a look at that. I'm not sure. We haven't, people, I haven't looked at each one myself, but we had a couple of different people verifying every symbol that was put down. So I'm not aware of that situation.
Yeah, somewhere not too far from the automated speed sign, there was, and I don't remember exactly through there, but I noticed the arrow was pointing the wrong direction. So.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll double check on that. And if it was done wrong, we'll get them back out to correct it.
Thanks.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to park activities. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware. The Boys and Girls Club camp in the park ran for four weeks in July. They had 40 youth. Almost all of them were from Millersburg. They told us. I think they said two were not maybe of the 40. And they were from just outside the city limits. They felt like it's a great success. They were really appreciative of the chance to use the park in that way. They have also approached us with a request to use the baseball fields in the fall for their kindergarten through second grade baseball program. So due to the situation right now, they're switching things up on their sports programs. They're gonna do baseball in the fall. We didn't see any issue with that and we're working with them on a use agreement for, for the fall. And it's, it's about five or six weeks total that they'd be using the, the field. And then JBO also was able to do shortened season and they held games and practices in the park through July. I appreciated that quite a bit too. I have not heard anything from them on fall ball and Boys and Girls Club got their request in first. So at this point, I'll be the only one that I'm aware of using the park in the fall.
One of the things, just for each of you, the Boys and Girls Club, I had a talk with John Anderson. He was very thankful and wanted to pass on to the council to their, their thanks. They have not been able to get onto any of Albany's fields. I know they have done softball, but Kinder Park, which is off Oak Street, was one that they were hoping to get into and they weren't able to do anything on it. So the, it sounds like that right now, the only people or stuff that may take place may be out here. They don't know what's, what happened in, in September. So with availability of fields in. And Albany School District has all their fields locked down still. So they can't, none of the school district fields can be used currently.
So Scott McPhee can check this off his bucket list. This is one of the key reasons he came on council was to promote our parks.
Use, use sports. Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's great. It's, it's great to see the, see the use out there. And it, I, I kind of feel like once we, it was a little bit of push to get that ball rolling. But once we did, now we're seeing lots of interest in it. So it's great.
And we've had more requests throughout the summer to use the park for different teams. We decided to limit it to the local ones. But there were a lot of people looking for field usage during this time.
We had a call from a, I believe it was a club team out of Washington in the Vancouver area. They wanted to know if they could come down and use our field. Some way they, I think when they had someone, one of the JBO games or something, they must have had a team down here that played one of the JBO teams. But I thought that was interesting.
All right. Woods Road Paving Project. I don't have a lot more to report except that, you know, we did award the contract to KNE Paving, doing business as H and H Paving, if you're familiar. And they are just completing the contracting documents. They're actually, they'll be dropping them up tomorrow. So that will be moving forward and the deadline will be end of October. We, for all these road projects, we extended them out a little bit originally. We wanted them all done before the celebration in September, but constraint isn't there anymore. We've been able to give them a little more flexibility, which has been nice during this time. But by the end of the construction season, this project will be done and we will be coordinating with residents because there will be some road closures during that time, temporary, and especially Millrite Farms. The last item we have on this list is the coronavirus relief fund. And did you want to talk about this or don't you?
America, you can film. Go ahead.
So we've applied for and received some funds through the city's allocation for the CARES Act. Based on the form that was established, we've found that we are eligible for $86,285.36 in reimbursement. Those have to be qualified expenses. So we have to provide the justification that we used it in accordance with the guidelines. So we spent about $9,000 to date. And we're getting ready to submit our next reimbursement request. So the things that we're able to be reimbursed are things like the glass at City Hall, the new windows that went in, all the disinfectants that we're using at the park. Anything that we're purchasing masks, anything that we're purchasing or work we're having done or directly related to COVID. We have been having discussions with others about how the city's portion of funds could potentially be used to support the community more. Especially kids and everything that's going on. Sorry, we just lost our video for a second. So we don't anticipate spending all $86,000 on upgrades here or, you know, or supplies, but we'd like to see if there's a way to use those funds to support our, our residents more directly. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah. And like Janelle said, we are, we're following with some of the others and we may be coming back to you on some, some options. We have to be very careful on meeting federal requirements, state and federal requirements on how we can. So the funds can't be used to offset reductions in income. And we can't do direct reimbursements, but we can go through other agencies. So we're, we're looking at some of those things and kind of watching. I had some discussions earlier today with Commissioner Nyquist. And he said that he would be getting back in touch with us and keep us in mind as far as some of the things that may be coming up for our areas if council was so interested that we may be able to look at placing some, some funding through that could assist our residents. So it's things that we would all look for that assist our residents and things. It does sound like Janelle and I had talked about looking at maybe ensuring some, you know, that kids in our community have access to equipment for distance learning. It sounds like the school districts can be using coronavirus funds for those that need iPads or other things for the distant, distant learning. So. So we're just, we're kind of taking, taking our time, looking at that and seeing where, we don't have as much as some of the others. There is some discussion still on additional funds that could come to cities on there. So we'll keep you appraised of that. The other thing that we may be able to look at, some things that we have already done, some things that have come out that we're seeing that cities are doing is that we may, because part of what, as you recall, the update we're doing for our website, that may qualify. We just need to kind of take a look at when we made that determination. But I think it was after COVID, after this was done, that we made the decision to go to. But a lot of communities are using their funds for, very similar to what we're doing with the update for our website to help keep the community informed of things. Other than with this, but things in the future. So we're just looking at, at some of those. We also had some discussion with the sheriff's office on some things that we might be able to look at doing and we're waiting to get some feedback back from that. One thing I did not put on the project updates that I do want to make sure and just share with you though, is we do have access. I have access now. So the county has put a dashboard up, sheriff's office. I have access to that. So if you have questions on things, we can pull things up and reports. I'm not so sure we would want to pull those up during a meeting with, with things, but if you have questions in areas, we can pull up and we can look at whole reports or you can come by and we can put it up on the screen and we can look at where calls for service are occurring. The types of call breakdown and, and things. So just, just got it. Something we had talked about with the sheriff's office had brought up probably about a year ago for that. And so we have that available to us now. So if you have questions in some areas, mayor, when you get a chance, when you get back from vacation, we'll set up a time and share with you what all's on there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Are you, you and Janelle finished now?
One other thing I forgot to say on the, the coronavirus relief, the CIRF funding. All expendable reimbursements have to be turned in before December 31st. So there, many have asked the question about extending that and at this point that is a hard deadline. So that's something to keep in mind. And then as Kevin mentioned, there are restrictions on what we can do and one thing we cannot do is use it to, for people's water and sewer utilities, because that's, we can't use it for revenue replacement. So if we are crediting people or letting people use that in a grant sort of way for that, we can't do that because it's like we're paying ourselves. So there are some restrictions and those are things we're being very careful about.
Okay.
If there's any questions on the Gantt chart, otherwise that's it for project update.
Okay. Scott Cowan, I stuck you with the farmer's market thing, forgetting that you're also handling the fire station design and so forth, and you're still working for a living as well. So if you'd prefer not to do that, I'd be happy to do it.
You know, we got some time. Maybe, you know, this is, this is keep it the way it is and see how it goes. And I appreciate that, mayor. Thank you. But yeah, let's see, let's see what we do. How things move.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Forrest, did you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. There is no unfinished business. So we go into new business and get into the sale of the property that we spoke about earlier. We have resolution 2020-17. Kevin, do you want to walk us, who's going to walk us through this? Were you putting on, doing it on me?
I will. I will. So you can see what we're talking about. It's just basically the sale of 4.5 acres. It was initially to Pacific Power or Pacific Core. And it came out and we've got this separate 0.15 acres, which had been basically polluted from the moors. Their stuff had come on over to that property. And so we made a new tax lot, it's tax lot 200. And we can go in and clean that up. It's gonna cost us a lot more money, I think, than what we're able to sell it for. And the moors have agreed to purchase it. And so I'm asking you to go ahead and agree to sell it and pass the resolution.
Okay, this slide says 4.5 and the resolution is motion being recommended is 0.15.
Yes.
So it's 0.15, is that correct?
Yes, the 4.5.
I'm sorry. That was Pacific Power. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Got it. I got too many doctors in front of me. Okay, so council, if you, if and when you are ready, there is a motion suggested that we use, if you like, or we can.
I move to approve resolution 2020-17 authorizing the sale of approximately 0.15 acres of the city of Millersburg, Oregon to Gordon and Shirley Moore.
Second. I have a motion from Scott McPhee, a second from Dave Harv, I think Pete Scott Cowan. Okay, so Kim, you got the motion okay?
I do. Thank you.
We're ready to go. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you Comcast.
Those in favor, please. Go ahead and vote using the yes and no's on your screens. And missing John?
No, I've got everybody.
We're all there now. Okay, so motion is passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Nice work, Steph.
Was there a question for Forrest?
Nope. I just said, nice work.
Very good. Professional services agreement, Eco Northwest, also on our agenda. Who's covering, who's covering that?
I am, mayor.
Go ahead.
So if you recall, last, last month, we discussed this, but in March of 2019, we shared the need for a council to consider completing a housing needs analysis and building land survey. At that time, council approved, moving forward with that, we budgeted $20,000 for the completion of the studies. Knowing that Albany had just gone through those same updates, John Morgan, our, our planner, planning director, reached out to the company that did Albany. The firm that had completed their studies for a proposal. It was significant higher, significantly higher than our estimate. John then reached out to Eco Northwest, another well-known Oregon firm, also specializes in this area, working for a proposal. And actually has done quite a bit in this area already, associated with the, the Intermodal Center.
already, associated with the intermodal center and the information that went to the state on that for that proposal. Eco Northwest has provided a proposed professional service agreement that was attached to the memo with a not to exceed of twenty-two thousand, with potential addition of fifteen-hundred in cost if any personal meetings are requested. John didn't think that that would be necessary. He's comfortable handling those type of things with it. And talking with Eco Northwest, they also feel that it's likely that they would come in below the budget amount, the not to exceed. Even though it is two thousand dollars over what we budgeted, we have sufficient funds to cover that if needed on it. And I would ask your consideration of approval to enter into the contract with Eco Northwest, and their intent is they would begin the studies upon adoption of the land use development Any questions?
Again, we have a proposed motion for consideration.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Eco Northwest for the completion of housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory for the city of Millersburg.
Second.
A motion from John, second from Scott McPhee. Any further comments or questions regarding this? Okay, go ahead and vote, please, using the yes or no marks. I've got five votes so far. There we go, thank you. Okay, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Final item, donation of land parcels, a continuation of work we did a couple of years ago.
Yes, so, I will start off, and Janelle can help fill in anything. So, this was actually one of the first items is when I started, as you recall, one of the first things that was thrown on my plate with a number of other items. But in December of two thousand seventeen, and it's amazing to think, I have to tell you, it doesn't seem like we're coming up on three years already. But the city accepted a land donation from Jay Konzer and Sons LLC for approximately eleven point seven acres of property, which was primarily wetlands and repairing areas associated with Crooks Creek. The city at the time was also made aware that we would likely see this request that has come before us, once the development of the final phase of Sweetwater was completed. And the developer of that, Mike Agy, with Millersburg Land and Development, has asked now if the city would be interested in the donation of land parcel tracks A, B, C, and D in Sweetwater Phases Three slash Four and Becker Ridge Phase Four. Track F is for easement only for purposes of assessing existing storm facilities, and I'll let Janelle pull the map up so we can kind of talk about it a little bit. The one thing, what we're asking for is council direction, if you would like to move forward with these to provide us. The one thing that I would say is, if nothing else, I would recommend track A and B, that the council accept those at a minimum. Those are, those were not included in the original land donation because of the need for clear water to come through, and now that it's through, we have those, those two minor, very narrow strips of land. So, the property on both sides of track A and B are already, were already donated to the city from Jay Konzer's. Track C is still in Konzer ownership, not a request at this time, that their plan is to come back and donate it to us, but I think they're looking at the tax purposes will be the first of, it'll be next year on it. So, track D and track E on the map would tie all of that back into the original parcels in which Konzer had the octopus mound. Track F, I'm going to let Janelle talk to you about, and then she can answer any additional questions.
So, track F is currently, if you're familiar with the area, a little access road that comes back here. It's currently, actually, it was part of Becker Ridge, because it was the flag to access this whole piece of property. There is a storm drain, manhole and pipe system back here that we do have easements for, we could access through the neighborhood, but it's much easier to access them along this road. So, when, yeah, Butch and Mike started talking about this, they asked if we wanted it, and I said, no, I don't see any reason why we would want to own that strip of property, but we would like an easement over it. So, they're, they said they would be willing to do that, so that's what that's about, just for access. If this ever develops, we could release that easement and get that access through the development in the future rather than along this little street.
That was a good move, the easement, as a bonus ownership.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying not to own things we'd have to maintain if we don't have a good reason to. The other thing in track E here, some of you may recall, there, this, years ago, and I couldn't tell you the exact date without looking it up, but the city put a drain line through, from actually south of here, but it comes through here, and there's an outlet structure here that then outlets into the seasonal drainage along here. And it's providing drainage for this whole southern area, and even comes from across Woods Road. So, the city has a, has a pretty good interest in making sure we have access to that location and making sure that nothing happens to it over time. It hasn't been an issue until now, but that was one other reason for thinking about accepting track E, because we do have some infrastructure in there.
Question, Janelle, regarding track E, either what you just talked about, so, what is, is that a pipe that drains in there, or is that just like a ditch?
It is a pipe underground, and I can't show you how far south it goes, but it comes up along this diagonal, you can kind of see a little bit of a difference in the field here, lower area, but the city puts this.
Do that again, do that again with the, yeah, okay.
Come on through here. And if you're interested, I can show you, get you the drawings, but there is an outlet structure right back in here. And when that went in, you know, Satan had a lot to do with that, yeah, controlled the property, so that made it pretty easy. But it, yeah, that's what's physically there. There's a, like, manhole outlet structure right here, and then from there, it's an open channel flow. It's seasonal, it doesn't see water in the summer, obviously, it'd be dry right now, but in the winter, it does, it does address some, I guess, address some drainage issues they were having, I don't know, twenty years ago or so.
Okay, all right.
What's the downside, if any, of taking ownership of track E and D? I don't see it being a high maintenance situation, do you, necessarily, Janelle?
No more than, we already have ownership of this tract, you know, the trees in here, we do have to keep an eye on. But, and the other thing is, you know, we're not accepting this today. If we want to put some conditions on them, like have an arborist evaluate all the trees and do anything needed done before we accept it, those are things we want to consider doing. Track B, it does have a lot of road frontage that then will be responsible for maintaining, but I would say we'd end up maintaining that anyway, because nobody else is going to. And then, and what track B does for us, if there was ever the decision from council in the future to do some sort of trail in here, this is a good starting point. We've got a little bit of property there, a little driveway cut, you know, that could be a trap.
I support doing this for a couple of reasons. One, if we do do the trail system, the whole thing between E and D become good targets for trail, and the other section by Konzer as well. It's also stormed, storm runoff, this area, which we need to be able to maintain, the integrity of, I don't see it being a high maintenance area, and I, I think there's mystetic values to maintaining it, keeping it the way it is, personally.
One of the things, one of the things you may recall, at the time, we accepted the original eleven and a half, roughly eleven and a half acres, that really is the area of the city that has our largest concentration of mature trees.
Where's that? Is that right there?
That, that whole area right there.
Yeah, that's, that's already the city's?
Yes.
Yes.
What about that?
That, over to the south of track B, there is ours, is the city.
Right, right. What about the, what is that? Is there an additional lot right above D? There's a long, yeah, that, is that, is there a house there now, or what is that?
There's, there's not a house there, but it is a buildable lot that was created as part of the division.
Pretty big lot, so, yeah.
I believe someone who was involved in the property at the beginning wanted to retain ownership of something, and that's what they retained. So, it's not, wasn't purchased by one of the builders who's been building out the rest in someone else's ownership, and I have not heard if they have plans to build on it yet or not.
Right, okay. Yeah, what about the, I do know, track D, I've been back there quite a bit, just biking and along running, and one day, I saw a lot of those trees, the trees are really looking like they've, I don't know the term, but since they've removed some of the other stronger trees, that's sort of in the middle of what was once, you know, the grove of trees, as you can see by the map. So, they're weak, and I've seen a lot of them sort of leaning over, some of them falling. So, like you said, you get arborists out there, and who, who's responsible for that and paying for that?
So, so, no, in track C, we're aware of some widowmakers and stuff that are in there where some trees have gone down. So, that would be one of the things that we'd probably ask before taking ownership, to ask them to go in and evaluate and have any dangerous trees removed before we take ownership.
Right.
And there's nothing preventing us from doing that with track D.
Track D and E as well.
Yeah, definitely track D, have someone take a look at that as well. One day, I actually thought I was going to watch a tree fall or two. It was just a windy day, it was just coming right down that road. I forget which one, that Tuscan or not Tuscan, but whatever that road, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, all the way.
Yeah, no, you're right, we've been keeping an eye on those, I mean, since they cleared, what they did clear, that has been a concern, and that's a concern, you know, around all the edges, really. So, we do want to make sure that we, that we have an arborist take a look at that. And going forward, I mean, that is one drawback, we do, we do take that on if we own it, if there's issues down the road, but we've had to do that in other city-owned pieces of property that were donated, the one off of Morning Star and Millersburg Drive. This summer, we actually had ivy girdling done on the trees. They don't need a lot of maintenance, we don't have to do a lot in there, but every once in a while, we do need to do something to make sure the trees stay as healthy as possible and aren't a hazard.
Yeah, that all seems reasonable to me, yeah.
Other comments, council, questions?
No, it sounds, it sounds great.
So, if we, if we were to make the motion as worded, do we need to deal with the, giving the arborist, the arborist review the property, those trees as a part of the motion, or we just kind of, you're doing that anyway?
We would do that anyway.
And, and we'd be bringing back to you the actual documents to approve the donation when they were official, so you could verify that those things all, we make sure those got taken care of in between.
Very good. So, again, we have a recommended.
I move to direct staff to work with the city attorney and Millersburg Land and Development to draft the required documents for the donations of the land to the city of Millersburg.
Second.
Yeah, a motion from Scott, and a second from Scott McPhee. Any further discussion?
This is Ron, can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
For track F, did the motion include the city accepting that or not?
Track F is an easement only, it's not a purchase.
Yeah, but it was, it was in the offer for donation, correct?
The track F would not come to the city, it'd be donated back to the property owner to the, that it had a butts farm.
I believe the way the motion is worded, it's the documents for the donation of land, in their proposal, they don't say that they want to donate that land, as they say they want to give them some easement. So, I think that the motion covers, covers that, that's what the question was.
Well, just being a resident of Riverstone Loop there, I know the neighbors, the HOA is concerned about the maintenance of that property, and just don't want it to be, become unmaintained because, you know, somebody that's really not interested in it is, is the owner.
Yeah, as you will see in the, in the staff report, the, the landowner, the current landowner, Millersburg Land Development is proposing to transfer that track to the Henshaw family, who owns, who owns that field to the south of Riverstone, Makeham Field.
Okay, that sounds like a good solution, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Go ahead and vote by using the symbols. Okay, we have a motion approved by consensus, or by, yeah, forgot the word.
I agree.
Old age is getting bad. All right, thank you. So, that's the end of the new business. Moving now to public comment again. We have whatever people now who are with us from the public, which is really great to see. So, if you'd like to speak in the lower left hand quadrant of your screen, if you have participants up, there's a little handy push on that, that doesn't work, just talk to me, we'll take you anyway. But I would like to have your name and the street that you live on, please. Anybody out there want to speak to the council, questions or concerns?
Okay. Did try to unmute everyone, if you're, you might be muted on, need to unmute your talk.
Okay.
What was it, was it open for comments from the, the?
This is for public.
Council.
This, this is for public, council's coming up next.
Okay, you were cutting in and out, sorry.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. So, any, any public comment? All right, it is good to see some public on, where with us tonight, so thank you very much for being here. We'll close sections if there is no comment, and then move on to closing council comments. Go ahead, Scott.
I just, yeah, it was some that Janelle said about trees and arborists. We've had some issues with ivy growing up around trees, is that correct? Did we address that with some trees?
So, that was the trees in the, that open wetland space just on the south of Millersburg Drive up to Morning Star.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the arborist in there last year and looked at the ivy situation, and they recommended doing the ivy girdling, so we got some schedules for this summer, and that, that has been done. If you're not familiar with that process, you may be, but it does, they don't take all the ivy out, they just cut it off at around the base, the girdling part. So, you won't see a big difference, but the ivy will be getting to die, done on some sort of regular basis, or else it'll take back over.
So, so, that's that, that, that green space on Millersburg Drive at the corner of Millersburg Drive and Morning Star, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that got, that got completed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we also had them, at the time, they evaluated the trees in there for, you know, looking for hazards, and they also do the park for us and checking our trees there and stuff for hazard trees.
Okay, so, so, that, that was actually the area that I was going to point out, because I was like, oh, there's, there's some trees there that really need it, so, excellent. And so, I, will that ivy then just die, right? It'll just die, once they, they trim it back, it'll just die up in the tree, and then eventually just fall off or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, and just to be clear, that was done throughout, but when we haven't looked for hazards and have some issues, you know, we haven't looked through the whole thing, but we're, if, if there are trees that are leaning or potentially coming down out in the middle where there's all brush and there's no access to it, we're not necessarily having them go in and take down every tree, we're looking at the edges, something called someone else's property could have fallen off the street, there, you know, anyone. We're not necessarily going into the depths where there shouldn't be anybody in there anyway, and it's very brush.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council? I have one for the public, and that is that we have until a week from today to get folks to sign up to run for city council coming up for the next election. So, you have, if you're interested, or know people that are, let them know. Again, we have one week to go for the cutoff for signing up with Kim at City Hall. We are not requiring people to go out and get the signatures as we used to because of the COVID nineteen situation, but we are charging this phony fee of ten dollars to do that. And I, I say that tongue-in-cheek, because, never mind, seems funny, we're charging ourselves to volunteer. But that was a council decision we discussed last time, and it's not really worth talking about, so, sorry about that. Anyway, that's out there. Any further discussion from anybody? Okay, I'm going to close the meeting at eight twenty-one, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, you guys have a good night.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Night.